I'd like to call the meeting to order and advise everyone that this meeting is being recorded and ask if there's anyone else in attendance recording this meeting. There being none, if you join me with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in indivisible liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. I don't believe we have any special recognitions.
We do not.
Is there anyone that has any citizens' concerns or comments? There being none, I will entertain a motion to accept the regular session minutes for December 18th, 2013.
I'll make that motion.
Second discussion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. We do not have our student representatives in attendance this evening, so we will move now to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The first item is, I do want to introduce, Janice, if you maybe want to come up to the podium. This is probably a first introduction for the leadership team in person as well. Janice King is our food service director. She'll actually officially start next week. As I had shared with you previously, both the superintendent and Lester and I met with Janice after Mr. Gray and Mrs. Holmes from Lester conducted a thorough interview, and we are absolutely thrilled to be welcoming her aboard. Just to share with you some of the credentials and experiences that she brings with her to us is, she currently was working, still I suppose as of today, in the Quabart Regional Schools, but she was a catalyst for that school system winning the USDA participation rates by 40 percent with innovative, excuse me, USDA healthier U.S. School Challenge Bronze Level Award in June of '13. She increased their student meal participation rates by 40 percent with innovative meal planning. She's increased training and national certification for school nutrition staff by 50 percent. She is a nationally recognized food service director. It is never easy to replace someone, especially as Ian contributed so much, but we certainly welcome Janice aboard, and I wanted to bring her tonight so that you could officially welcome her as well.
I do appreciate the invitation to be here this evening to begin to become familiar with everyone and to learn about your programs here in all areas, because I think we're, it's an exciting time to be in education, because we can all work together to really develop some really strong programs. And school nutrition programs are really vital to build the health and wellness of children. And so we, you know, I'm a real strong nutrition advocate for children, so I really look forward to the opportunity to be here and really develop some new programs. We're going to get you all involved with opportunities to participate in our programs at the cafeteria level, you know, within the district, our district schools, and that's just a really wonderful opportunity to explore things that you're interested in as well as the students.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you very much. I'll be here.
So next, we have Mr. Hanfield. I had shared with you, a grant was submitted recently to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed. As you know, Auburn Middle School has received an innovation planning grant and then an implementation grant, the STEM Academy. So Mr. Hanfield and his team has worked on the creation of a freshman academy and submitted that grant. We've not yet heard the results of that, but he, Mr. Hanfield is here tonight to share a little bit more about it with you, planning to return at the February meeting to give even more details. So with your permission, I will turn it over to Mr. Hanfield.
Good evening, everyone. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Thank you, Dr. Brunel. As you recall, when I was here with the rest of the leadership team presenting budget in November, I had mentioned in my budget presentation that we were in the process of creating a freshman academy at Auburn High School for a variety of reasons, and Dr. Brunel asked me if I would just give a very brief kind of overview of where we've been since that night. So I'm going to be brief, but give you the overview at the same time. So when I was with you November 13th, we talked about the freshman academy proposal, and we talked about how critical it is. I mean, research bears it out, but certainly, you know, there's anecdotal evidence for those of us who are working with these kids every day, about how critical our ninth grade year is for our kids in setting them up for future success, not only from through high school, but post-high school as well. And we talked about three components that would be part of it, the academic preparation piece, social-emotional programming, and some cognitive self-regulation pieces for our kids, all tied together off of our current core curriculum as an enhancement. The hallmark of this, and this is where the Innovation Schools piece ties in, is that it's a 21st century skilled academy in a hybrid environment, so that our kids, through the one-to-one iPad initiative, are working with their curriculum and other elements of their programming as freshmen, 50 percent of the time in the classroom, 50 percent of the time, you know, through their iPads. And we're hoping to secure the grant from DESI in the event that that should not be successful. There are contingency plans in place to support this going forward. Since the time that I've been here, since November 13th rather, we participated in Innovation Schools webinar, which was very enlightening in terms of the process. We also had the benefit of Mr. Gagnon and his team having gone through it, and we were able to kind of lean on their experiences as we developed the prospectus. We did submit the prospectus, I believe you have copies of that. We've identified the teachers who will be part of the academy. We've dispersed iPads to all of them. Nice, new, brand-new iPad airs with the assistance of Mr. Bouvier and Dr. Brunel. And we've got the training set up for our teachers to use these iPads with our kids. There's a series of trainings. The first one's coming up on January 28th, and then we have our opening meetings as a group. Those of us who are, you know, who are working on the freshman academy, those are scheduled In the opening meetings, what we'll be talking about, obviously scheduling possibilities, is a variety of scheduling possibilities for this freshman academy. One of the parts of the Innovation Schools grant initiative is that, you know, there's this metronomes to it that aren't necessarily maybe realized, you know, in a regular public school, quote-unquote. And so this will be generated by the teachers participating in the academy. Curriculum development will be ongoing in the areas that I already just highlighted for you, academic, social-emotional, self-regulation. There'll be some freshman-only activities. There's one freshman kind of class activity a month that will tie into our curriculum, will have continued iPad training, and then we're going to hopefully, if this, if everything works out the way that we're hoping it will, we secure the Innovation Schools grant for the planning part of the freshman academy. It's going to then position us to go after an innovation fellowship grant through the state, which would allow us to put in motion plans to make Auburn High School a totally hybrid school environment by 2018. As we're rolling our kids through the one-to-one iPad initiative, our kids each year are going to be progressing, you know, from ninth grade to 10th grade with iPads, to 11th grade, and so on and so forth. It doesn't make any sense to have a freshman academy with hybrid one-to-one, you know, learning activities, et cetera, and then have them progress out of grade nine and then have it stop. So as we're moving towards making Auburn High School a totally hybrid learning situation by 2018, we'll be looking at securing an innovation fellowship grant from the state, which will give us substantial dollars in planning and execution of this plan. So as Dr. Brunel said, we'll be coming back in February. February 12th, I believe, is the next school committee meeting that's scheduled. I'll have with me some members of the freshman academy team. We'll be talking to you more in detail about what the curriculum will look like, activities that we have planned. Hopefully by then, we'll have some word from the state in terms of where we are with the Innovation Schools grant that, you know, will help support this, and then we'll go from there. But it's exciting, and I was actually, I shouldn't say I was surprised, but I guess I was taken aback by the enthusiasm of the teachers in the building when we do this. Anytime we do something like this, we have certain ideas about how we think it'll play out, and when we asked for volunteers, which is always the most voter-friendly way to go, we were just totally overwhelmed with teachers who were excited about the prospectus, excited about what we're doing here for our freshmen. And I think we'll have a lot of exciting things to share and say to you on the 12th of February, so I look forward to that opportunity.
I entertain a motion.
We need a motion to do what?
I believe we need a motion to accept the...
To, I'll make the motion to approve the creation of the freshman academy at Auburn High School for the 2014-2015 school year and to support the Innovation Schools grant application.
Do we, do we need to wait until we find out if we get the grant or not?
So actually, what I would recommend is that it be just to support the Innovation Schools grant application now. We do intend to move forward with this. It may have to be at a slightly different pace, but probably if you amend that motion, it would make sense.
Okay. I'll amend my motion to approve that we support the Innovation Schools grant application.
Second discussion.
Not really a discussion, just a comment. Dr. Brunel, I want to just compliment you and the entire leadership team. I'm extremely impressed with the progress that you've made so far to date on this, but one of the things that I'm really impressed with is that there's just not hot talk done here. There's actually action that takes place. When they, you guys say you want to do something, the follow-through is there, and the motivation is there, and everything is just there, and it moves along. It's not something that's talked about and then dropped by the wayside, and it's never getting to, and whatever. So I just wanted to make that comment, that I think Auburn's where it is because of the leadership team and all the staff members and the students themselves that get involved. But, you know, we continue to come forward with these different types of initiatives and stuff, and I'm just excited that things actually, you know, are put into action and move forward. So I want to thank everybody for all of that. So this is just yet another exciting thing, so.
Thank you. On behalf of the team, we're an impatient group, which is a good quality sometimes. We continually press forward, but thank you.
Further discussion? I agree. Thank you very much. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous vote. Unless there's any objection, we can move, I would like to take out of order the FY215 budget.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. What we have before you, we've provided some additional information, some of which you have seen before, but in front of you, there is a sheet with all of the different colored markings on here. We did that really to create a footnote or a key. As you recall, we had presented a budget to you back in late November, and it's been on the agenda to be discussed each meeting thereafter. What we are proposing this evening as a leadership team, if you look to the bottom of the sheet, is a draft budget to go forward to Ms. Jacobson, Town Manager, and Mr. Kazanovich, the Chief Financial Officer, for Monday, a budget that has a 3.53 percent increase over FY14. We went through the budget requests in details, detailed for you back in November. But if I can walk you through this, we have made some changes from that original budget to get us to this level. Also, I would remind you that I think we have, not I think, I believe we have, and I say we, and that includes certainly the school committee leadership team and the entire district, really taken an awful lot of effort and pride in our working relationship with the town and trying to come to, you know, collaborative agreement around issues. Last year, we sent forward at this time a budget that was 3.12 percent above FY13. The previous year, we sent forward a draft budget that was 3.46 percent above FY12. So really, the budget that we're sending or that we're proposing that you support to send forward as a draft is very much in line with those numbers that we have seen. So to walk you through it, if you'll recall, and you'll see the key, and I'll point it out to you as we go down. So in terms of proposed staffing additions, those that are noted in red, which is the increase in our special education child-specific IAs and ABAs, what we want to ensure is that our students, whose IEPs, their individual ed plans, require that they have support throughout the day, what we have been doing, and this has been a longstanding practice now for a number of years, is we've been shuffling IAs and ABA support staff. Doing this would allow that if a child's IEP calls for a one-to-one, his or her IA would be the one who would greet him or her in the morning and stay with him or her until the close of the day. Those you'll notice, if you go down to the footnote section, the very colorful portion down, the bottom 25 percent, anything that you see in that color, that red, indicates that it's really a legal requirement that we do this to fulfill students' IEPs. Staying with the elementary schools up at the top, the increase of 2.0 FTE, ELL, or English Language Learner, tutors. At our next meeting, if you recall last October, in October of actually '11, was it that we got notification, when was the CPR was in, October of '12, I'm sorry, so October of '12, they came and did an audit for our civil rights, our special education, and ELL. We've just very recently received the ELL report, and Dr. Loze will be presenting on that, and it was an outstanding report that spoke to our solid programming for students, but we were short in terms of the amount of time that we're required or recommended by DESI to provide for students depending on their levels of English acquisition. So that would actually support that issue that we have before us. If we look at Mary D. Stone, the three positions noted there are all to fulfill students' IEPs. At Julia Bancroft, the addition of a fourth-grade teacher, that is based on a school committee practice of maintaining class sizes below 25. Based on current numbers, we will need that teacher to maintain that level. Specifically to Bryn Mawr, again in the red, is IEP issues, there are incoming preschoolers as there were at Mary D., whose needs require specialized assistance. The full-time special education teacher at Bryn Mawr, that is in a slightly different color, a light brown color, and that is in response to a district initiative that we have undertaken, which is co-teaching and inclusion. And it really targets the special education and oftentimes our low-income subgroups, but certainly our special education subgroup. We're noticing some positive impacts of that already, and this would actually bring Bryn Mawr School, the number of students there, in alignment with the other schools across the district. At the middle school, we're looking to add a full-time media slash iPad integration specialist. As I noted here, we've got the eighth-grade one-to-one pilot that's ongoing this year. We're looking for implementation of that next year. But in addition to that, the following year, we're going to be opening a 3,500-plus square-foot media center in the new Auburn Middle School. Currently, we have a secretary at the middle school who provides support in the library that is currently there, but it certainly, as great a job as the individual does, it does not come close to having a trained library media specialist. So that's the reason for that request there. The other request at the middle school is again in response to an IEP legal obligation that we have, and then finally is to increase the art teacher. This again has been a longstanding issue. There's been inequality between District 1 and District 2, with District 2 having only a .8, so basically the equivalent of four days a week for art services as compared to five in District 1. So that would bring that into equitable opportunities for both sides. Now, what we are proposing for reductions to the budget, however, is to, and this has been after discussions with Mr. Kazanovich, is to remove the iPads from the operating budget and put it instead into our FY15 CIP. It would be a lease that we would be proposing for that, so that reflects a $72,000 decrease. In terms of the special education bus, that had been proposed by the former Director of Pupil Services, upon further review, Mrs. Kaufman and Mr. Gray have reviewed through that. We're actually anticipating, based on current numbers, and students can be identified for special education as their needs change or as the population changes, but right now, based on students of whom we are aware, we'll go from 50 requiring transportation to 41. So it would not substantiate the need for an additional bus. So this would keep us at our level services, so that also reduces by $40,000. In addition...
Excuse me, can I just say?
Oh, sure.
On that bus, so the bus would have been an additional one? It's not one we currently have?
It would have been.
Okay. Thank you.
Correct. It would keep us at our exact levels right now.
Okay.
And then also, we see here the fuel oil. Mr. Gray worked with, and this comes up later in the agenda, with French River, as we always do. We'd originally budget $3.75 a gallon for oil, and it's just over $3.09 that has been secured. So what this reflects are the decreases in that amount as well. So it is our recommendation with these reductions that we go to a overall budget at this point of $23,108,148, which represents 3.53 percent. And if we think back to years past, as much as we'd always like to when we submit this, and this is in keeping with the chart of the timelines, we've not yet seen any Chapter 70 monies. There's hope that those will be out earlier this year than they have been in the past. There's good news coming from the State House that they have a 5 percent increase in revenues that have been realized at the state level. The task force that I sit on with other superintendents, there are a number of initiatives and position statements that we are putting out to really try and boost the Chapter 70 money that comes to all towns in terms of the per-pupil expenditure additional amounts, but also looking at some of the communities, Auburn being one, that is not yet, there's still that target gap, that they had been closing for a number of years, and when the economy really stalled, they had to put that in abeyance for a bit. We believe, and they were able to make some movement on it this past school year for FY14, that they will actually start to see an increase in that too. So I think there are many hopeful signs out there currently. We'll continue to watch and monitor them. We'll continue to work, as Mr. Gray and I do, with Ms. Jacobson and Mr. Kazanovich, and see where we go, but I think this is a fair place for us to start, and certainly I think the needs that we have identified here speak to either legal obligations, programmatic obligations that we have made, and all of them are directly and positively impacting students.
I'm going to make the motion so we can talk about it. Okay. I'm going to make the motion to approve the FY2015 draft budget of $23,108,148 and direct the superintendent and business manager to submit it to Town Manager Julie Jacobson by the January 13th, 2014 deadline.
Second.
Discussion.
Through the chair, if I may. First question is, on the fourth-grade teacher at JB, do we have a place to put them and have a classroom?
We do. We actually do. We can't say that in all of our buildings, but there we do.
Okay. Okay, that was my concern there on that. And then my second question was, I just need some clarification on the media iPad integration specialist. This particular person would be in addition to the librarian that's currently there?
We actually don't have a librarian there.
Oh.
What we do is we utilize one of the secretaries at the middle school who spends a portion of her time in the library.
Okay.
And that's actually been a practice, just to have it open for some portions of the day for students to take books, but the middle school has not had a librarian there. I think it may have had one back when I was principal at Bryn Mawr, which was between '01 and '06, and I can't even speak definitively to that. Would you know, Mr. Gagnon?
I've been there now for five years. We haven't had a class.
Yeah.
Would this, would this person also pick up some of those responsibilities?
Oh, this person would pick up, so...
Okay. So it's not just strictly technology-driven?
Oh, no. It would be, so it's media as well as the technology piece, so combination.
Okay. And with that, on the person, excuse me, on the person that was sort of filling in as a librarian, when you were just saying that, were they receiving a stipend of any or was just kind of part of their daily duties?
It was just something that Mr. Gagnon had come up with a creative solution, and the person was willing to do it.
Okay. I just was wondering if there was any cost savings from this stuff.
No. No, no, it was cost neutral.
Okay. Okay, those are my questions. Thank you.
Just a couple of questions for Dr. Brunel. Where are the middle school students getting their technology training now? I know you said we have a secretary who's nice enough to help out with the library, but the actual technology?
So we have two tech teachers at the middle school now, one who is more exclusive tech and the other one who does more tech engineering.
Okay, my other...
So those would continue to be in place. It's really, and what the secretary has done is more the media specialist piece on a limited basis.
Okay. And we have, we have enough, enough technology there now and enough going on in the library where we could support a full-time position?
Absolutely. That's why our position is also iPad specialist. We put forth a little job description, this person has a very aggressive job position in terms of description. We're responsible for 200 iPads, the maintenance of those in the upgrades, and working with teachers and going into the classroom and implementing in their curriculum. So that person will be in a co-teaching position as the plan to help those teachers. We currently have our eighth grade, which are coming pretty expert at iPads, 10 of them. Now we're also introducing 10 seventh-grade teachers, who are going to need that help with their classroom, typically with a curriculum to get. So it'll be 300 next year.
And when we move into the new building, would we be looking for support staff for that individual, or would he or she be alone in the new media center?
At this time, I don't believe we'll need support staff for that.
Okay. And my other question concerning the salary of that, that person, I'm just curious how that differs from the starting salary of the fourth-grade teacher and what qualifications? Is it experience thing?
Typically, what we do when we make projections for hires, the reality of it is, there seem to be an awful lot more teachers out there with elementary certification than as you go up the grades and when they become specialized. So somewhat of a supply and demand issue as well. The library media specialist, I believe, requires an additional degree, to have a master's degree even coming in. So our goal is always to hire the absolute best person for the least cost, but this allows us, when we budget in here, allows us some flexibility, so that way, you know, we can truly hire the best person to bring onboard. So it's a, we actually see this differential. You'd see the same number as noted for the media specialist if we were hiring, say, a math teacher or a science teacher at the middle or high school, because there are far less of them, and this is certainly true of library media specialists with this certification than there are, say, like, an elementary classroom. Not that anyone is any more valuable than the other.
Right. My only concern was that we weren't looking for a great deal of experience when we could possibly get someone younger, fresh out of college, excited about the position, excited about technology. That was my only concern.
Sure.
You're saying that they're going to need that master's for that position coming in?
As we...
Which will apply to pay them.
Yeah. As we transition to the new middle school, our goal would be to have somebody who has that information technology, library media specialist certification. So I think it would behoove us to find that person now, so that he or she transfers with us when we go to the new middle school.
Okay. And then just, just back to the fourth-grade position, I'm all for it. I would hate to see any of the classrooms go over 25, but is that also a contractual item, or is that just a school committee?
It's not. It's really, there is in the teacher's contract, it is a guideline, but it is not stronger than that.
Okay. As I said, I fully support that. That's all I have.
Great.
I really don't have any questions. I just want to say to the committee and the principals and all the working teams that did this budget this year, I mean, usually there's questions on questions on questions, but as the years go by, with the team that you have set in place that work together so well, we don't have all these questions anymore, and it makes it much easier. You're not looking for the sky, you're looking for the middle ground, and you're looking for the education of our children, and I want to thank you all.
I agree with Wayne, and I'll say, you know, obviously, you know, it is a draft, and as it moves forward, if the funding sources aren't there, we'll deal with it. We hope for the best. You know, no one, none of us likes to see any type of cuts, and I do concur with what you're saying, that this is realistic moving forward, that these are our needs. Unless there are no further questions or comments, I'd entertain a vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous.
Great. Thank you. We will get this to Julie and Ed.
And we can, I think dismissed unless...
We can. Mr. Fahy's going to stay for a little bit.
Mr. Fahy. Everyone but Mr. Fahy.
Always happens to you, Joe.
Do you wanna?
Yeah, the CIP review, we can do that next, actually. Yeah, that would, that would be great.
So if, um.
That'd be great, stay.
So you, basically what, um, you'd like them to stay, but you can't leave.
Well, I, I meant Eric should, no, you know what, I'll go through it quick.
After they figure out what we're doing, we'll let you know.
Stay now.
An objection, we'll move to unfinished business and move up FY two fifteen CIP review.
That'd be great. Just to review, um, these documents here. As part of, and actually, I'm gonna have you hold off on voting these until the meeting of, of January twenty-second, because as we continue, Mr. Fahy, Mr. Gray, and I to review through these, we really wanna be sure of two things. First and foremost, that we're keeping our buildings in the best shape possible. But secondly, that we're also being as fiscally conservative as we can be. We certainly don't wanna ask for any materials or items that perhaps, um, we can do without or can be postponed to another time. But what I would like to draw your attention to on page three of the superintendent's memo, what we had done, and there's actually one change I can, can note for you already, is look to see, as you know, in FY sixteen, there will be, once you make the decision to do so, uh, the potential for two school buildings to come offline when the new middle school comes online. So there would be two buildings that we would not be required, um, to maintain and keep in the best shape possible, 'cause they would not be used for the education of students presumably. So as part of the joint meeting that we'll have with the finance committee and Board of Selectmen, they're looking for a review of what can they anticipate down the road, not only in terms of CIP changes, but also any operating budget changes that may, um, come as a result of that. And certainly, uh, we had a meeting just earlier today, the three of us, along with Mrs. Moran, to really look carefully at our budget that we currently have, and try to do some projections about what we can anticipate happening down the road, not only in sixteen, but then looking forward to seventeen and eighteen. So at this time, what I'd like to do is, if you have any specific questions about items here, we can answer them. But we do intend to put this on the agenda for the next meeting. And along with this, what you'll see is, uh, a number of other documents that we're creating. Obviously, our goal is to share them with all of you first, before they're shared with finance and Board of Selectmen on the twenty-ninth.
So, so we're gonna go through these in more detail at the next meeting?
Correct.
Okay, I'll wait. Yeah, that's fine.
I mean, I'm happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Um, I just, I'm, I'm just curious on the, on the fiscal year twenty fifteen?
Mm-hmm.
The oil tank upgrade for Julia Bancroft?
That's a great question.
Why would we do?
Well, actually, you know, we've had, um, some preliminary meetings with, uh, Mr. Kazanovich and Ms. Jacobson. We regularly meet with them. And, um, if I state this incorrectly, Mr. Fahy or Mr. Gray, correct me. But regardless of, and actually, in FY fifteen, we'll still be occupying these buildings. But, um, what we discussed with them is, even if they come offline as educational facilities in fifteen, to have an underground tank, it's going to need to be removed and done so properly anyway, even if it was to go back to the town. Where this is money that comes from the town, it's gonna need to occur anyway. It's really a building issue as opposed to an educational operational issue.
Okay.
So that was the reason for that.
All right, thanks.
But we do intend to go through this in, in greater detail, um, and in highlight items for you. But one note I will, um, share with you is on FY fifteen, on the second page, you'll note that we've got, you noted in the, the increase of technology for the one-to-one iPad initiative, which has been discussed with Mr. Kazanovich, and that then carries forward in the subsequent year's CIPs as well. And if you would okay this, I'm gonna share with you the readiness center. So back up to superintendent's report, if that's okay?
Yes.
Before we, before you release. Um, I did just want to, um, give credit where it is due. This is the flyer in here. As you know, I, I sit and have sat on the, uh, Central Mass Readiness Center board for a number of years. And we are finally at the stage that we are, um, creating grant opportunities and professional development opportunities. And through Mr. Bouvier and Dr. Lozé's coordination, we put in several grant applications, and, um, four of which have been funded. This first one actually begins tomorrow. Mr. Bouvier is coordinating this, and we've got nearly thirty people or so from all around Central Massachusetts who will be participating in this. Some remotely, and others will be coming, um, here to the high school presentation room. But the title is Transforming Teaching and Learning Through iPads. It is, uh, completely free to teachers. They will earn PDPs. Uh, Mr. Bouvier has coordinated with EdTech teacher who's provided, um, through Dr. Lozé and Mr. Bouvier, they're out of Harvard University, some really high-quality iPad training. So we've got a number of people, um, from the district who will be participating, as well, as I said again, um, from as far away as Ashburnham, Westminster, um, and even many that are, that are local. So I wanted to give kudos to both, um, Mr. Bouvier and Dr. Lozé. Great opportunity for our teachers and students, I'll tell you too.
Um, can I just ask for some clarification? I'm sorry. So, um, I, I understand that it's, that it's a webinar and that it's, uh, going through, but, um, Mr. Bouvier is actually the one facilitating this?
So what will happen is, it's a three-hour session on, um, six Thursdays. For the first hour, EdTech teacher out of Harvard will do remotely, do a webinar on some teaching skills. And Mr. Bouvier gave us the topics for the six Thursdays. Once that hour is over with, what Mr. Bouvier will facilitate is a professional learning community, discussions among all the thirty or so different participants, all of, each of whom will create a unit that embeds iPads in it. So every teacher in grade six to twelve had the opportunity to participate. They'll walk away with that many units that embed iPads. So he's gonna help facilitate the discussion and the continued learning after the one-hour training.
Okay, so that is on his time from four to six for six Thursdays, that he's offering to do this.
Correct.
You are such a nice guy. Seriously.
I agree. There, there is a, a very small stipend, but it does-
But I'm sure it's not-
I agree.
Six Thursdays for two hours.
Correct. It, it is a, a big commitment on Mr. Bouvier's part, and it's, uh-
And how did this come about? I mean, how did Mr. Bouvier get involved in this? And how, I mean?
Well, the readiness center is, um, was created probably about four years ago now through Governor Patrick and Secretary Revel at the time. And, um, there are six regional centers across the, the Commonwealth. And grant opportunities became available, so, uh, Dr. Lozé, Mr. Bouvier, and I looked to, what did we already have ongoing as initiatives underway? And could we take advantage of some of this money to better support our staff in doing this? So we put in four proposals, four, and I think all were funded, right? And I voted yes for all of them, but I was not the only yes vote, just so you know. There were four great proposals, four great proposals.
You know, yet again, you know, it's just another put Auburn on the map. I mean, I just, again, thank you guys for, you know, taking the initiative and, and going further beyond.
I agree.
So this is wonderful, yeah.
Good. Thank you.
You can leave now. Go home, get some rest.
Thanks, everybody.
Stay warm.
Putting in the extra hours, too. We're actually gonna be moving back up to the SWC's financial audit annual report.
Okay, yes.
Last man standing.
Hi, Mr. Fahy, how are ya?
Good to see you back.
That's good. That's right.
Good to see you back.
As, uh, comes to you on a quarterly basis, um, but also this is the annual report that you see. Just as, um, we'll soon be having an audit in the district and have those annually, um, so too did the Southern Wester County Educational Collaborative. So there are two documents here, the annual report for thirteen and the financial audit. As member communities, it is the requirement that you accept these. I would be happy to do my best to answer any questions that you may have.
I have one question.
Yes.
Wait a minute, why don't we, should we make the motion to accept this?
Yes, we can make the motion, second it, and then open the discussion.
Do you wanna do things by the book?
Sure. Yes, let's do it by the book. I'll make the motion to accept the twenty thirteen annual report and financial audit for the Southern Wester County Educational Collaborative.
I'll second that.
That's good. Now you can talk.
Yes, sir, the floor is yours.
Actually, I don't have anything.
This is one of those meetings.
Then I'll entertain a motion, unless you change your mind again.
I think we already had that motion, didn't we? We had a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Unanimous vote.
I'm still thinking about that plumbing leak.
It's gonna be pretty bad.
Well, we can move now back to unfinished business, to school choice.
So the school choice report, I wanted to update for you. It was several years ago that we first put together this first report. And just wanted, um, for my own information, but obviously for yours as well, as you'll soon be voting on this again, take, took a look at, both at Auburn High School and Auburn Middle School, the school choice students. We looked at them, if you recall, in terms of their attendance as compared to students in the aggregate at those schools, discipline issues, their participation in athletic and fine arts, as well as how they're doing academically. And as you can see from this report, uh, our school choice students continue to do, uh, very well, in most cases, at least as well, and sometimes even, um, better than those in the aggregate. As you know, we have twenty-six students currently at the high school and fifteen students at the middle school. So I'd be happy to answer any questions, uh, but I think this is a, a worthwhile exercise for us to do each year. And I would think, um, especially that you'll soon be taking a vote of whether we would continue in this program, um, or not. Okay? So it's actually on the agenda, if you, um, would be willing to take the vote tonight to continue in school choice, based on the current numbers, with the ability for you to alter that should you need or wish to during budget season?
I'd entertain that motion.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Discussion?
Yeah, I just, I'm sorry, did you have a question?
I did, but I'll wait till-
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to-
That's okay.
Cut you off. Um, no, I totally forgot what I was gonna say. I, I forget.
Maybe you'll remember.
I forget, I'm sorry.
Is there any data, or do you have any big, the infraction number compared to this? It's quite, I mean, is it just, I mean?
At the two different schools?
At the, well, between school choice and, it seems like it's, uh, school choice is doing very well.
Mm-hmm.
Is it because they're thankful for this opportunity, or is there any research into that, why they're still?
I don't know exactly, um, based on, I could certainly speak to Ms. Giadano, Mr. Gagnon. You know, I, I think there could be any number of reasons, but I, I will say this, that our experience with school choice students are that, um, well, first of all, we're fortunate to have great kids throughout Auburn, first and foremost. Uh, but those children who are accepted into a school that is not their home school, I think is very much perceived as a privilege, you know? So I don't know if that plays into it or not. Um, but the other thing I would say to you is the number of infractions that are noted here. We do a very precise job of keeping track of even the smallest of infractions, because we're really, um, cognizant, cognizant of making sure that patterns don't develop. So because you see a number here, it does not mean it is large-scale issues. They could be very small issues, um.
Yeah, I was just, um, well, I should say impressed by, 'cause I know Mr. Gagnon runs a very tight ship. And, you know, to have, just so public at home knows, the school choice students, when we talk about infractions, there's zero across the board.
Right.
And I think it's very impressive. I just wanted to acknowledge it. And I'm sorry, you had a question?
Yeah, it was, it was related to yours, so I'm just gonna, I'm gonna build upon that a little bit. Um, Dr. Brunel, when we say it's a lottery, is it strictly a lottery or is it other criteria? Because that, that was, that was my question, um, concerning that. How, how do we end up with, um, such good individuals? I, I knew that part of it would be, you know, found somewhat privileged to, to come to such a nice, um, high school and, and soon to be middle school. But is there other criteria?
You know, there isn't. And what we get is the school choice application form that you all approved a few years ago. We don't, when people submit, no one submits transcripts. We don't get any documentation from the school in terms of the disciplinary history. We, we have a singular piece of paper that has, uh, the parent's name, the child's name, their, their home address. It does list any siblings on there, um, because they may get preference in future years as part of the policy that you've accepted. And we know really nothing about these children.
Wow.
And, and their names are put on a small piece of paper folded, and they're randomly selected. And then, um, as, it happens very infrequently, I don't even know if we had any this year, if a parent declines, when Sartner makes the calls to them, if a parent declines, we then draw the next, to, to the next individual. But we really don't know anything about them.
That's great. And my, I guess my comment would be, um, as you follow the trends of the student population in Auburn and the budgetary needs, um, never hesitate to, to come forward with, um, some suggestions as far as upping those numbers.
Sure.
I agree with that. That was gonna be something I wanted to stress, too. I think that this is proof that this program's working. And if we have the ability, capacity to give one of these children an opportunity here, they're flourishing.
Right, right. I, I put that on there for that because I know in the years past, at least the past three years, that has been something that the school committee has deliberate, deliberated on. And as a way to, if further reductions were required in the budget, we offset those by bringing in some more school choice children to try and minimize any negative impact that might have had.
And I know we're talking about adding a teacher, just so everyone at home knows, it's not in the grammar school ranks. It's just middle school and high school, so we wouldn't be hiring another teacher for strictly school choice. We, we have to keep that in mind as a committee. And if there are no, yes?
And that was my question.
See?
Was based on the fact of financially, how are we holding up with, with the forty-one students that we currently have?
Uh, very good right now. In fact, um, our high school numbers are in a bit of a dip right now as compared to when they were, um, just six years ago, when they first arrived. Our middle school numbers, um, it probably, just right now, thinking aloud, would not be recommending any increase at the middle school level, especially as we transition to, to a new school. But, um, I think, looking at considering adding for high school, I think it is absolutely something we could consider. And I should pause for a minute, because at the middle school, if we were to do it, we could do it at seventh grade or eighth grade, because they'll be at the high school by the time the school opens anyway.
That, yeah, then I would, uh, definitely, because I agree with what, what Jeff said. You know, if, if we can, and, and you know what, kudos to our school system. I, you know, I'm, I'm willing to put it out there and advertise it. And if, and if we can bring more, you know, students who will flourish in our system, and then we can do it within our own, you know, budgetary and not, you know, I, I would very much, 'cause I know, do we still have a waiting list?
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, you know what, that's, I mean, so if, I would definitely, you know, look to do that as long as we keep maintaining without, you know, overburdening, you know, our, our, you know, current school system. So, I mean, that would just be, you know, my personal.
Great.
I know that, so.
And we can always amend it, right?
Right.
Through the chair, I just wanted to mention that, um, I just completed the National Institute of School Leadership. And my, uh, final action, learning plan was the effect of school choice on education and finances. So, um, I did a rather extensive research on it, 'cause it hasn't really been looked at throughout the Commonwealth. And I'd be glad to share that with the school committee at some point, if you'd like.
Yeah, that would be interesting to look at. Yeah, thank you. Yeah.
Um, just one final question. Does this add any, um, cultural diversity to our school system? I know geographically it has to.
Sure.
So, in other words, they're meeting, they're meeting students from, from other areas. I know in some cases Worcester, but cultural and the-
You know, I, I've not looked to that degree, but I will tell you, um, and I've commented, that our schools continue to become more and more diverse, which I think is a great, a great thing. Um, but I cannot contribute, attribute that to whether they're school choice students or, or students who reside in Auburn. But, um, but it's great. I have commented that, uh, our diversity- or students who reside in Auburn, but it's great, I have commented that our diversity levels continue to rise, which I think is a great thing for all of us.
I think so, as I say, even if it's just geographical, it's just meeting people from other neighborhoods.
Sure.
From other districts, and, you know, it's something that, at my school, that I think is really great. You're meeting kids forty-five minutes away, and they end up spending a lot of time in other towns, and it's, I think it's a good thing. Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Here is a unanimous vote.
I've mentioned previously regarding the meeting on the twenty-ninth, does that take place in the presentation, or did you re-read that? I don't know if the location has been set, we'll have to follow up on that. But noted here, so they're really looking for information, not only what I described earlier, but also to the best of our ability, what will be the cost and what types of projects will be required to refurbish the current middle school to accept the base three and five, and as you sit on that committee. We actually, it was supposed to be next week, we postponed until the end of February, just with the holiday break, it just didn't allow for us to get as many estimates. But our goal continues to be to utilize effectively CIP money that's already been designated, re-appropriated, but not to incur any additional debt on the town, if possible. I included for you the letter that was sent to parents, actually, it was dated and printed on the second, and with the, well, the nature's cruel snowstorms on the second and third, we sent it home on the sixth. But I did present the other night to, on Monday evening, to the M O D and PACTA CHOG PTO, and there was a number of parents in attendance, and this came up briefly, and a parent noted how much she appreciated receiving this. So this letter went home. We still have not gotten that guidance from DESI, it's been promised in terms of how do we select which classes, so this actually went to all students in grades three and five at PAC, in grade four at J B, in sixth and eighth at the middle school. As soon as we get that, we'll then follow up with a specific letter to the actual families of students who will take.
Moving on to new business, oh, sorry.
I'm sorry, just through the chair, I would just, and it's just an informational thing, I'd be interested if you receive any feedback, or if any of the leadership team receives any feedback from parents as to, you know, if they're really against this. I would just be curious to know how they feel about it.
Will do. Under new business, oh, this is why Mr. Fahy was hesitant to leave. But all about it, Mr. Gray can handle.
He said he would trust me with everything.
Yep, so I'm going to, with your permission, just give a quick overview, but then have Mr. Gray explain this more to T L. There is the opportunity to submit a statement of interest to MSBA, the Mass School Building Authority. We are not looking to build another school. We've got Auburn Middle School underway, but there is the accelerated repair program, and Mr. Gray has expertise with this, so I'm going to turn it over with him, to him, to explain what it is that we are hoping to do with this.
Well, last year, the MSBA initiated this program called the Accelerated Repair Program, because they recognize the fact that within any school building, there were certain repairs that if they were completed in a timely manner, would have a much quicker payback. And in specific, what this accelerated repair program addresses is the needs for replacements of roofs, boilers, windows and doors, anything that would provide energy efficiency where the initial investment by a town and our municipality, and the MSBA would provide a much quicker payback than their usual program, which takes anyway from two to four years in order to complete. So I was fortunate enough last year to submit three proposals at my last district, and they were all accepted. The MSBA looks at the program, this first part is just a statement of interest, which is basically the school committee and the town saying they're interested, there's no commitment, because the first part of the process is more informational gathering by MSBA. They have a limited amount of money, they look to see which municipalities, school districts and towns are interested, and they look at a ballpark number of what you're looking to do. So Mr. Fahy and I have been meeting to discuss those particular areas, such as, as I mentioned, the roofs, doors and windows, HVAC systems, and so we have put together a proposal. The window opens up as far as the ability to begin submitting the information on Friday, and we have until February fourteenth in order to submit a formal interest letter. As you may recall from the middle school project, the MSBA is very specific in their language, that they request that both the school committee and the town verbatim approve language, saying that they're submitting a statement of interest. So at the next meeting, if you approve tonight, we will be bringing forward a proposal that will detail what we're asking from the MSBA by building, by project, and as I said, it's not a commitment by neither the school committee or the town, just a statement of interest, saying these are the areas that we'd like to ask for funding. If approved, it's accelerated, meaning that MSBA usually makes a decision before summer, and then usually that preceding fall, the work can begin. The way that the MSBA structured it is they actually have pre-approved owner project managers that are assigned to the district that come in and do the lion's share of the work as far as going out and actually getting the bids for the roofs or the boilers or the doors and the wells. And so it's a relatively clean process, and it allows, as I said, the participation rate, I believe, for our district is somewhere around fifty percent. So if we were going to look to redo a roof for a couple hundred thousand dollars, MSBA's participation for a hundred thousand obviously will allow us to spread our CIP money much better than we do right now. So that's the basic tenets of the program.
I entertain a motion.
I'd make the motion to preliminarily approve moving forward with the MSBA's statement of interest as presented by Mr. Gray, allowing school administrators to seek support from the Board of Selectmen as required. The school administration will then return to the school committee for the official vote.
I'll second that.
Yeah, you said going through this process, you're getting the money out of CIP, you're not going out to the taxpayers and ask for another tax increase to pay for it, right?
No, I think that's one of the reasons that it puts Auburn in a much better position probably than some cities and towns, is the fact that we have dedicated money towards those projects that have already been bonded, so in some cities and towns.
I just want to make that perfectly clear to the residents and taxpayers, that it's not going to be another two and a half override coming down the road.
No, no, we're looking to actually use the current money that we have dedicated to that and stretching it even further by asking for MSBA participation.
Thank you.
It's really, through the chair, a great opportunity to take what's already been approved, and if we can have the state participate and pay for half of the cost, would really be a savings as well. So we'll return, Mr. Gray, Mr. Fahy will return once that language, but we just really wanted to seek your approval to actually submit the application, to start the application. It can't be submitted until both you and the Board of Selectmen vote on it. And that would also be something that we'll share with the FinCom and B O S on the twenty-ninth, so that they know we're working on this regard as well to try and further save funding.
So the only thing that I would just, you know, and I'm sure you guys will do your due diligence on it, just let's make sure there's not a gotcha in there somewhere along the way, you know? I just, and as you said, I know they're very specific about wording, and I just, you know, this is one of those things that's like too good to be true, so you just want to make sure that, but yeah, so that would be my only concern.
The good news is Mr. Gray has experience in his previous district, writing them and receiving them, so has been through the process. This is relatively new program?
It started last year, I think that they decided that there were those areas that, as I said, had a much quicker payback. And I want to show you that step one is just a statement of interest. Once the MSBA accepts you into that program, they then put all the numbers together, and you have thirty days to decide whether you want to participate or not. So it's not a case of, you know, you say you want to participate, everybody agrees, and then you're stuck. Then they go out and they get an O P M, and they come back and say, oh, you know, that two hundred thousand dollars roof's really six hundred thousand dollars. So they do, what the process is, is they do their due diligence, and then I believe it's a thirty-day window that both the school committee and the town have to either accept it or not accept it after they've invited you in for the first phase.
And you're three for three, Mr. Gray?
I was amazed, because we had just finished a rather large, two large HVAC systems, and so I assumed that, you know, that MSBA would be more inclined to look somewhere else, and they approved all three, so we got two new roofs and a brand-new windows, and I think it was close to a million dollars when it was all said and done. They're doing it right now as we speak, as they did the roofs just last summer, I guess.
Excellent, ten thousand, keep it up.
I'd like to go three for six.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous vote.
The next item, the school building, the middle school project continues as we move forward, we've got a next SBC meeting tomorrow night. We've made a commitment, if you recall, back when we were seeking support from the community, we went and did forty-plus presentations across town. We're actually going to be doing, a week from today, duplicate sessions to provide information, a general information update, the local cable access will be filling, there's a duplicate sessions at noon time and then again at six. And we're also that day making a special presentation going over to Light Care Center at ten o'clock that morning. And they'll be talking about, to the butters, about what impacts, obviously they will be most impacted once construction begins sometime in late March, is what we're anticipating for some site work. But it is a general information open to the community, so we'll be televised, and we look forward to providing an update, we continue to make good progress. And then the upcoming events, it seems impossible to believe that it is our January eighth, Martin Luther King Day is not far behind, and then we do have an upcoming half-day of professional development on January twenty-eighth with plans. Almost nearly finalized on that, and we'll provide you an updated upcoming meeting on that.
And the Tuesday, January fourteenth meeting's been postponed, right?
That one has, yes.
That's the one that's going to the twenty-second, yeah, okay.
Right after printing. That'll be February twenty-fifth, yeah.
Thank you very much, we can now move on, unless there's any further questions to the business and financial. How much do you have on new business?
I have something on under new business, it's nothing serious, I actually would have talked about it earlier, if I was here before the meeting started. But some, some parents in town have been concerned about the website for high, the high school sports. It hasn't been updated, there's some old information on there, and as far as finding the scheduling, I looked it up, and it was a little bit difficult to navigate to find the schedule, and there was actually an area where it gave you a site to go to, but it wasn't actually a link. And I just wonder if we could get maybe Home Team linked to that website, which would help out with a lot of the statistics and things like that. And there were a couple others, I looked around at a couple other sites, North Bridge Grapton, and it was a little easier to navigate those sites, and I guess their biggest concern was just finding the game schedules, because a lot of times the T N G is not accurate. So I don't think it would be a huge undertaking, and I'm not sure who's responsible for that.
That's certainly something we can, I was not aware, but we'll look into it tomorrow and get that updated, that's one of the reasons why.
Okay, and I would suggest, maybe if we, if we had a student that was interested, not to put their own commentary onto the site, but just to update some stats and things like that, it might look good on their college resume. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else under new business? Mr. Gray, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, the first piece of information before you is budget transfers, these are for year-round, not only, they occur between the two thousand and four thousand salary. If anybody has any questions, but this is in line with maintaining our financials in an appropriate manner.
Further questions? Thank you.
Seeing none, the next document you have before you is our year-to-date budget report. This was as of December thirtieth, twenty thirteen. As you are aware, the six months of the fiscal year is a laugh, so myself and the business staff went through this to see if there was any out of the ordinary, which is kind of reflection of what some of the, a couple of the transfers were, because we wanted to bring money from one budget into another to bring the budget in line. But at this point in time, through the first six months of the year, we have seen nothing that would cause us rise to bring to your attention, so we seem to be good financially at this point.
Thank you. And are we good with the oil? I know we talked about it earlier.
We are, there is a vote, though, just for you to accept the bid.
Yeah, I'll make the motion to accept the French River Educational Collaborative, number two heating oil bid of three dollars and nine cents a gallon with petroleum traders.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And thank you, and French River.
The last is just for informational purposes, as Dr. Brunel mentioned, the town and the district is going through our single audit, the end-of-the-year audit. We were informed today that the auditors will be onsite next Tuesday and Wednesday, and then shortly thereafter, I assume we'll get some sort of a audit report and or management letter, as you have in the past.
Are they here today?
No, they'll be here next Tuesday and Wednesday.
Oh, okay.
They're actually at Town Hall, they're actually going to be onsite next Tuesday and Wednesday.
Oh, okay, oh, they're at Town Hall now, starting this week, I got you, okay.
I don't believe we need to go into executive session. I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Aye.
Can I, everyone?